Gosh, I really must have whacked my head. So, item number 11 is: Report from the Measure HH Essential City Services Advisory Oversight Committee on the Fiscal Year 2021-2022: Audited Measure HH Revenues and Expenditures. Presentation by Ryan Smith, our Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So, tonight, we've got a Measure HH report from the Measure HH Oversight Committee. First, tonight, I'm going to go over a few things. So, I'm going to kind of wrap up the 20-year-plan variances study that I did over the last few months at the beginning of this year. We'll talk about the Measure HH report card. And finally, we'll have a Measure HH Oversight Committee report from the committee chair. So, first, so, in the first half of this year, I did a review of the 20-year plans that was presented to the committee last fiscal year, roughly in January, February, and June of 2021, or 2022, sorry. And there were some significant variances in the plans that were presented. So, one of the first things that I did with the HH committee was look at those variances and try to explain how we got to those variances and why they happened. So, there were three versions that I looked at: one from January last year, one from February of last year, and one from June of last year. These three versions kind of showed significant variances in the ending fund balance of the general fund after the 20-year period. And these variances were upwards of $100 million over the 20-year period. So, I looked specifically at the January and June versions to make comparisons. And so, to begin with, the revenues between the two versions from January until June had increased by $46.1 million. And this was due to three reasons. First, there was a property tax assumption change. They increased the assumption of what the property tax increases would be on an annual basis, and that made it about $26 million over the 20 years. The June version included a reader board that was approved last year, and that increased to $15 million over the 20 years. And then, there were some other revenue changes that led to about a $5 million change over the 20 years. Expenditures between the two versions increased by $142 million over 20 years. And there's really two reasons for this. First, on personnel expenses, those had went up by $51 million between the two, and that was due to the increases that were approved for staff between 2022, '23, and '23, '24. And that increased by about $51 million over the 20 years, which comes out to about between $2.5 and $3 million per year. Operating expenses increased by $96 million between the two versions. And this was due to two reasons. The January version had admitted the ambulance program from the 20-year plan. There was some change in the accounting that they were, how they were presenting that, and it just got omitted from the plan. And the January version also used a projected end-of-year balance instead of a budgeted balance. So, this led to some pretty large variances totaling to about $96 million. So, when we looked, when I plotted out all the 20-year plans since the Measure HH started and the 20-year plan started being developed, it became clear that this January and February versions were kind of the outliers of what had been going on. So, the prior years were all the lines there at the bottom, and then, the February and January versions were the outliers that kind of stuck out. So, the January version had increased fund balance by about $100 million. And then, when we came back to June, it decreased by about that same amount. So, it increased and decreased, and I think, in the end, I think the current 20-year forecast is accurate, given the current trends and the information that we know today. These large variances that we saw last year should be examined and explained prior to kind of publishing to, you know, the committee or council. And staff needs to be cognizant of the short-term impacts and how they affect long-term models. So, those are kind of our takeaways that we took from this review. Now, I'm going to jump forward to the 21-22 report card. So, the report card was developed by staff following the conclusion of fiscal year 21-22, which ended in June of last year. The report card was audited by the city's auditors, Davis Farr LLP, and they audited it based on the legal compliance with the ballot measure. So, they concluded that the Measure HH reporting complied with the reporting requirements in all material aspects. So, the Measure HH revenues totaled $17.1 million in fiscal year 21-22. And in the report card, they identified, we identified expenditures of $5.4 million. We had one-time expenses, which were additional pension paydown of $3 million last year. And the remaining $8.7 million went towards reserves. So, to kind of look at the $5.4 million that was spent on recurring city expenditures, we had $3.6 million expended for public safety. And this is done through a calculation of public safety expenses that are allocated towards Measure HH. We had senior and youth programs, which totaled $1.3 million, and capital improvements for the residential road rehab project of $375,000. So, that made up the total of $5.4 million. The one-time expenses was the $3 million that we, that payment towards CalPERS for the unfunded pension liabilities. And then, the reserves was set aside for $8.3 million, was increased into capital reserves, which has since been moved to the Measure HH reserve. And then, there's also some reserves that are set aside in the Fleet Management Internal Service Fund for fire apparatus future purchases. So, this note just kind of shows the Measure HH reserves at the end of last fiscal year totaled $41,998,000. And it's split between a variety of places: OPEB and Pension Trust reserves currently are $1.9 and $11 million, respectively. We have $4.9 of HH reserves in our emergency reserve fund. And then, capital reserves at this time was $18 million and $5 million, which totaled 23, which has since been, $6 million was set aside for the purchase of the property on Bouchard. And then, there's the fire apparatus reserve that's currently $730,000. So, we currently have just under $42 million in reserves, thanks to the HH fund. And it's important that the $11 million and the $1 million, those are reserves that have been set aside for pension and OPEB. And our pension liabilities is a long-term, I don't want to say problem, but it's going to be an ongoing issue that we're going to have to continue to pay attention to and continue to deal with as we go in the future. It's not going to be something that we're going to be able to solve in the short term. As CalPERS continues to have less-than-ideal returns each year, that's going to continue to lead to add to our liabilities. So, I think having these funds in reserve definitely makes the city more financially stable, as opposed to if we were to move all of those HH reserves into a pension that would reduce our flexibility of having these funds. So, kind of, I guess, that's kind of the, and in my presentation, and I'm going to turn it over to Randy Takayama from the Measure HH Oversight Committee. He's the current chair, and he's going to give the committee's report on the last year's report card.
Thank you, Ryan.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. Ryan, thank you so much. This time, I want to say thank you to my fellow members of the HH committee. I also want to thank Maggie Lee, as well as Ryan Smith and the accounting staff at the City of Fountain Valley for the work they've done for the last 18 months. I know it hasn't been easy. I will say Ryan has been a tremendous value-add to the HH committee. He really stepped into a lot of unknowns when he faced us initially, because we had a lot of questions regarding this $100 million variance in the 20-year deficit, which he didn't really know because he wasn't here. And he must have spent probably eight or nine months with the accounting team, digging through and just presenting the variances that he just presented to you. So, thank you for that. At this time, also, I want to thank City Council. We've seen more City Council participants in our HH meeting in the last six months than probably in the last two years. So, thank you for those who continuously come to our meetings and take an active role. We see that, and we appreciate you. My job here is to present the original report to City Council regarding HH, as well as present an addendum to this report based on the decisions that were made at City Council, I believe, on April 17th or 18th. So, I want to reiterate the responsible pledge that guides the Oversight Committee. What it does is it sets forth the city's priorities on the use of Measure HH funds, which states that the majority of this money should be used to maintain essential city service, such as public safety, 911 emergency response, keeping Fire Station 2 open, and maintaining firefighter and paramedics, senior and youth programs, streets, sidewalks, roadways, parks, repair, stormwater systems, parks and play equipment, provide other essential city services. In addition to that, when there's additional revenue gains that are realized to pay off, pay down, consolidate, refinance outstanding debt, pay down unfunded liabilities, and rebuild and maintain the city's established reserve levels. And the reason why I bring this up and to reiterate is because this is the basis of our understanding, and it's foundational to our concerns and the following recommendations that will be made. So, if you look on page 346 at the bottom, it's summary of our concerns. Number one, we believe that the city has transferred almost $15 million more than is justified to maintain and rebuild the reserves. Our capital reserve account exceeds its council-established target. As a result, transferring Measure HH funds to this account is inconsistent with the spending pledge. As the report card that was audited by David Spar, as of June 22, the capital reserve balance was $30.5 million. The reserve target was anywhere between 10 and 15. That just means it's over by $15.5 million, of which 6% was funded by HH. Number two, on page 347 at the top, we believe that the city may be overcharging Measure HH for essential services, keeping the Fire Station 2 open, and for senior and youth programs, as represented on the annual report card. These increases are inconsistent with the methodology of our committee has used since its inception. More importantly, the Measure HH Oversight Committee has not consulted or included in the conversation that led to these changes. So, what this meant was, when we looked at the report card, let's say, two years ago, it made sense. And then, the following year, the way the funds were used in order of priority changed drastically, and the amounts left over was very minimal. What I mean is, our understanding of HH was as a stopgap revenue source, meaning that if there was a shortfall of operating revenue to cover operating expenses, then HH funds would step in and cover those shortfalls. The report card we originally saw went the opposite way. It actually used HH funds first, it appeared that way, and then, used operating revenue to cover the rest. So, our recommendation is, going forward, if that can be established, what order should come when we cover operating expenses? Should it be operating revenue, and then, if there's a shortfall, HH funds comes in as a stopgap, or the other way around? Our thing is, let's just make it consistent. So, we do a comparison year over year, it's on a consistent basis. Number three, the city does not have a mechanism to ensure that when budget surpluses are identified, Measure HH is a first fund made whole. This allows Measure HH funds to be spent outside of the spending pledge. What this really boils down to is a couple of things. One is, if we had written process in place of where HH money went since inception, we probably wouldn't have gone through what we did when Ryan wasn't here. Because when he stepped in, he literally had uncovered this for us. There was no, there's no process or SOP in place or methodologies to say, hey, when HH money comes in, this is kind of where it goes, this is priority, and at what allocations, right? Again, we just want to maintain consistency, just in case this committee turns over, or City Council turns over, or, let's not think about it, what if Ryan leaves? You know, we said, Ryan, welcome, you can't leave just because of the wealth of information he has. Because, again, that information he brought really dictated of our recommendations here. Last but not least, number four, the Measure HH Oversight Committee and City Council were given inaccurate financial forecasts on two different projections in 2022, exacerbating the city's structural deficits. And, Ryan, you spoke very well to that, so thank you. Now, here's our recommended action. We'll go to the bottom of page 348. Luckily, again, because of Ryan and Maggie and the accounting staff, some of this has already been addressed. Number one, the Measure HH Oversight Committee recommends reallocating the overcapitalized fund balance in our capital reserve to the city's Pension Trust account. At a minimum, these funds should be identified as Measure HH funds, to ensure that they are used consistent with the spending pledge. Thank you for that. Number two, page 349, the Measure HH Oversight Committee recommends that the Finance Department and Measure HH Committee meet to collaborate on appropriate metrics for building the Measure HH report card. And again, that has to do with the consistency of the methodology, that, again, is not only transparent, but, again, is the same year after year, and so, no one's surprised by it. And again, Ryan and his team have agreed to work with us, so thank you. Number three, the Measure HH Oversight Committee recommends that the city adopt an accounting process that ensures that Measure HH allocations are fully captured. Again, this goes to a consistent, transparent process, so that no matter who's sitting in this chair next year, or two years from now, it doesn't matter. If someone new can come in, the methodology is already set and agreed to, and everyone has an understanding of where these numbers come from, and what's being paid, what percentage, and what order. Number four, the Measure HH Oversight Committee recommends that City Council make a public commitment to the spending pledge. We also recommend that this action be taken each time there's a change in the membership of City Council. And again, this is just a recommitment every time there's a change, saying, hey, we understand the importance of HH. Because if you look at it, I believe it's the second-largest revenue source for the city, and its importance. None of that, but to adhere to it. Because, again, this is what the voters voted on. Lastly, number five, the Measure HH Oversight Committee recommends that staff provide a public report to City Council at a regularly agendized meeting about the financial irregularities that occurred in early 2022, including assessment of the impact on the structural deficit. And again, Ryan kind of beat us to it. He's already presented it to you and explained. I know he explained it in about 10 minutes, but that probably took nine, six to nine months. So, again, Ryan, thank you to your staff. At this time, are there any questions? Because, again, we did also an addendum to what the actions that City Council took on April, I believe, 17th. Any questions?
Yes, Councilmember Harper.
Thank you, Councilmember Harper. Randy, thanks for the presentation. I really appreciate all your guys' efforts on HH Committee. You mentioned that the report card, I guess, the way that the city had been reporting HH usage of funds had changed. Can you sort of elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So, when we initially saw the report card, I think we saw salaries for public service was like, don't quote me on it, but was a couple of million dollars. And the first question we asked was, well, why is this coming up now, when in years past it wasn't on this report card? Meaning, why is HH money being paid for salaries now, when it wasn't the last six years? You know, what changed?
Okay. So, was it primarily, there were some public service salaries that weren't there on the first couple of report cards, and then, appeared later? Okay, all right, thanks.
Exactly right. And again, that goes to our ask here, is if we can all get on the same page, really define the spending pledge, not only in what its intent was, but in practicality. What is it supposed to do? What is allowable cost, what's not? And so, I think that would really set the tone moving forward of any confusions or any disagreements that we may have. Again, we're just the Oversight Committee. That's all we're here to do. So, thank you for the question, Councilmember.
Thank you, Randy. Any other questions or discussions for Randy?
Okay.
Thank you, Randy.
Absolutely. I do want to bring up the addendum report. So, if you look on page 356, because we took it as two different events. One was the annual report card, and this was kind of the addendum, because some decisions were made that impact HH. So, we'll start on the second paragraph. First, we want to acknowledge that City Council has approved the creation of the Measure HH Reserve, including the transfer of $23 million from our capital reserves. This step will ensure that residents are able to track expenditures paid for by Measure HH, and is a positive step in the right direction. It is our belief that this step addresses the first concern and recommendation we outlined in our original letter. So, this really goes to the residents of Fountain Valley, if they ever listen to this or watch this, that this Oversight Committee, City Council, and the accounting and finance staff, we're all working together. We made a recommendation, they went forward with that. It really shows that, you know, we're doing, we believe collectively, what's right for our citizens. So, thank you for that. Now, second, the committee believes that the $23 million should not be spent on capital projects. And again, that goes to our foundational belief, or what was outlined initially in the HH. We believe that the spending pledge did not prioritize capital projects. Instead, the spending pledge prioritized paying down our debt and addressing our pension liabilities. The only way to ensure that when Measure HH expires, our debt is eliminated and our pension liabilities have been managed, is to dedicate all extra Measure HH funds to debt and pension liabilities, not new capital projects. And again, this goes to our belief when we first started this Oversight Committee, like, what is our guiding light? And that was actually outlined. If people want to find, it's actually a PowerPoint on the city's website under Measure HH, as well as FAQs under the website. And so, again, that's really our guiding light. There was no mention of capital projects. This leads into the third one. We believe that the purchase of land for the construction of a new firehouse is not consistent with the priorities established in the spending pledge as originally conceived. We are also concerned that the repayment of the $6 million being borrowed from Measure HH, reserved purchase due land for the Fire Station 1, is not codified. We recommend that City Council formally commit to repaying the money to the Measure HH Reserve. We also do not believe that Measure HH funds should be funding source for the construction of new firehouses. If Measure HH money is used, the committee would recommend that the Measure HH Reserve be repaid using income generated from or on the property housing the new fire station. And that is it? If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to address.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, thank you so much, Randy, and thank you very much to the efforts of the committee. I believe we have some public speakers?
Yes, we have two requests to speak. First is Katie Wright.
Hi. I have no financial acumen. I'm a citizen that wanders in. It's like I've come in halfway through the movie, and I expect everyone to explain what happened in the movie before I got there. I apologize for that. But as a citizen who is starting to attend some of these meetings where I'm welcome, I'm going to give a citizen report. I went to the most recent, I believe, the most recent Measure HH Committee meeting. Mayor Constantine was there, Patrick Harper was there, I believe Randy was there virtually, Maggie was there. I was very impressed with the idea of having City Council members renew the pledge. You might even have to dust it off out of mothballs to find the old one, because it hasn't been repeated, recited, renewed regularly. I think that's very important, it would help add trust. I just started paying attention within the last year to what goes on in City Hall, and hearing all these financial woes and rumors, and, well, this fund is $20 million off, that fund is $7 million off, then hearing, well, everything's actually okay, over my head, admittedly. But it generates a feeling of distrust. I think it would be very helpful if every one of you would recite this pledge. That was one of the things I noted. Another thing I noted, Matthew Taylor pointed it out. The person, they had an outside agency come and give a report, and they said, oh, it meets all the guidelines, it meets all the state guidelines. And he had to point out, well, we are being held to a higher standard. We have our own Measure HH Committee here to hold us to a higher standard than the state guidelines. It has to be held to the City of Fountain Valley's own guidelines, which were not necessarily being met by the report that was given. I'm not an expert, I can't give all the details, I wasn't taking proper notes, but I would recommend citizens, please, show up to these meetings. You're a better set of eyes and ears than I am. If I can come up here and tell people what I saw, I was very impressed with our Measure HH Committee members and their focus and their passion for trying to make sure that what the voters voted for is actually being accomplished. Please show up to the next meeting, please show up to the strategic planning session, please start showing up here if nothing else. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Matt Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Matt Taylor, and I'm a member of the Measure HH Committee and have been since its inception. And I just want to first say thank you to Ryan, his team, and to all of you. Randy is absolutely correct, the level of engagement that we've had over the last few months has been outstanding, and I feel like we're having some honest conversations. I think it is incredibly important, however, that we make sure we all understand there's a difference between Measure HH, the legislation, and a legal audit, and the spending pledge. The very reason we have a spending pledge is because the legal language of Measure HH and the audit requirements are incredibly broad. It's a general fund. That was the whole purpose of establishing an Oversight Committee and having a spending pledge, so that while there wasn't a legal limit to how we spend the money, there was, as Randy put it, a guiding light. And we took as a city a commitment to that guiding light, and that commitment said, when there are annual excess funds, they are supposed to be used to pay off pension liabilities and debt. It did not say if there's extra HH funds annually, set aside a capital reserve funds to use that money to build new firehouses. Now, that may be an essential expense, but that's not what the spending pledge said. And what happened was, is that money got moved into a capital reserves account. When Measure HH pushed back on that, the compromise was just to move it into a Measure HH reserves account, but it's still being used for capital projects, and that's not consistent with the pledge. Is it consistent with the law? Is it consistent with the measure? Sure. But that's why we have the committee, and that's why we have a pledge, right? We did talk about infrastructure when we sold this bill, but we talked about it in terms of a water situation, and our water situation, or the pumps that might need to be replaced, and we talked about it in terms of roads and parks' conditions that we had let go for years. Not once in any of the meetings that I attended did we say we were going to have capital projects funded by Measure HH funds. And I think that's just the thing I'd like to leave with, which is, I understand things evolve and times evolve, but that's why the City Council needs to make a renewed commitment to what you mean by the spending pledge. I know what I thought the spending pledge meant, I know what the people who voted for the spending pledge meant, but I don't know what any of you think the spending pledge means. And I think it's going to be really important, as we move forward, that we all get on the same page and continue this collaboration, so that the money is being consistent with what the voters were promised. Thanks.
I have no further requests to speak.
Okay. Any further, any discussion from councilmembers? Okay.
We have a motion from Councilmember Bowie, a second from Mayor Constantine.
Clarification, is this a, for attorney for the city, is this, do we need, we're voting? voting on accepting the report, or what are we voting on?
You know, that's always style and tradition. It's receive and file, and some agencies do a vote and some don't. It's not like you can not vote, and all of a sudden you haven't received the report. So you just kind of have to play it by how your legislative body feels comfortable. Some receive and file, they vote, and that's on the agenda. If you want to vote to receive and file, that's fine. Otherwise, the report's been filed, it's part of the record, council's heard the presentation. If you want to move on to the next item, that's fine, too. There's really no legal difference between the two.
Up to the mayor.
With the pleasure of the council.
Do we have a motion in a second? I can withdraw them, and we move on?
We could vote to approve this, to accept the, I just want to make sure I knew what I was voting on, that's all.
Yeah, me too, same here. Yeah.
Item number 11 passes to receive and file the report.